Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening. It's an immense honor for me to be standing here in front of you. I have a sense of profound respect for what has already been achieved at the University of Texas at Arlington under the leadership of President Spaniello, in conjunction with the dedication and the hard work of the wonderful faculty and staff over here. I'm in awe of the tremendous strides that have been taken as related to student success and access, research impact, and increased connectivity with the greater region served by this university. I am humbled by the opportunity that exists to follow in the footsteps of Presidents Spaniello, Witt, and Ederman, who built this great institution to where it stands today, poised to take the next step towards Tier One status, and more importantly, towards being a model 21st century urban university, a shining exemplar for others to follow, just as other universities today look on the innovations and leadership taken by UT Arlington in the areas of educational excellence, delivery, access, and translation of research to practice. Lisa and I have been here since yesterday, and we have enjoyed every moment. Thank you. I'm going to spend the next few minutes on some impressions and thoughts, not plans. I'm sorry if that's what you thought you were going to hear, because plans need me to listen, learn, and then discuss. I'd like to start off with a few numbers: $20 billion, $3.2 billion, $1.1 billion, eighth, and first. I'd like you to keep these numbers in mind, if you will, for the next few minutes. I will come back to them later, and they will be a test. But these are amongst the reasons why I'm attracted to UT Arlington. I'm attracted to a university that has balanced excellence in teaching and research, striving for new highs every single year, never losing sight of the primary goals of serving students in the community, a university that is home to some of the foremost internationally recognized scholars in all disciplines, an institution that has already been described as an academic centerpiece in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, a university that graduates greater than 6,000 students with bachelor's degrees, greater than 3,000 master's degrees, and over 160 doctoral degrees every year, each one of them becoming productive members of society, leading to an ongoing economic impact of over $1 billion to the North Texas region, and a total extended benefit of over $12 billion and over 122,000 permanent jobs, a tremendous impact in today's uncertain economy. Building on a foundation through its establishment as Arlington College in 1895, the University of Texas at Arlington has excelled as a provider of education, and in recent years has made tremendous and land-breaking strides in developing a research enterprise to complement its excellence in enabling academic and educational access. I believe that UT Arlington must continue leading this effort towards shaping a new model for excellence within an educational institution, balancing its mission with the need to have an ever-increasing global impact as a leader amongst international universities. While the 1862 Morrill Act and the later Smith-Lever Act laid the foundation for the core mission of the then land-grant universities as a source of knowledge and support of the then agrarian and industrial economy, the model now needs to be re-envisioned by redefining boundaries off and interactions between education, research and development, technology transfer, and translation, workforce and economic development, to emphasize quality and impact, not only through educational excellence, but also through its effect as a center for innovation and creativity, and a driver, in terms of the university, for positive change for the scientific, technological, cultural, and socio-economic balance and prosperity of the community, region, and the nation. In many ways, academia needs to reinvigorate and re-envision the roles of faculty and of education, melding the current perspectives of degree-level knowledge and programs with the wider dissemination and philosophy of knowledge transfer and preparation needed for success in an ever-changing world, one that is growing smaller by day and one that needs increasing understanding of the complex areas of diversity, expertise, and cultures. Today, perhaps ever than ever before, the big ideas of land-grant universities, assurance of higher education to all, sharing of knowledge to the widest level, and teaching of both the liberal arts and the practical sciences, needs to be cherished and nurtured, using modern technology to expand access, affordability, outreach, and impact. The University of Texas at Arlington has unique strengths and opportunities that position it extremely well to forge new directions and to lead the nation in strategic areas crucial for the 21st century. It does this through its strong programs and excellent faculty within its 12 colleges and schools. These also provide a strong foundation for interaction between disciplines and for cross-disciplinary cutting-edge education and research. The national ranking of the College of Engineering and the College of Nursing and the program in landscape architecture, as well as the acknowledged excellence in leadership in the other departments, programs, and colleges, provides a tremendous foundation on the basis of which UT Arlington can continue its journey towards Tier One status, whilst ensuring that it maintains excellence in teaching and research rather than sacrificing the former for the latter. The operation of a strong continuing education and workforce development program for the region, and the UTA Research Institute, in addition to the faculty's strong ties to industry through applied and translational research, academic scholarship, creative arts, and the university's participation in University-Industry Consortium in North Texas, provide opportunities to further enhance the research enterprise and the university's impact on the region. Opportunities to interact, collaborate, and team with medical centers and UT Dallas, in addition to other institutions, further facilitate the growth of educational, research, and scholarly activities, as well as our ability to provide the very best educational experience to all our students. So what's new? A very common question, but the answer at UT Arlington is a very, very long list of achievements. We are building a tremendous foundation of excellence with faculties such as Kosher Abeybani, Na-Yuen Chen, George Kondraske, and Robert Magnusson, 4% of the total number of charter fellows in the National Academy of Inventors, a testament to their ability to innovate and conduct translational research, and a tribute to the excellence that exists at this institution. Faculties such as J.C. Chow, Brian Dennis, Mario Romero Ortega, and a host of others who are working at the intersection of medicine, science, and engineering to solve crucial problems related to health, and young faculty such as Professor Juan, who was recently awarded the prestigious NSF Career Award to continue his pioneering work in deep-dissue imaging as a non-invasive and more accurate alternative to a biopsy. Professor Priscilla Cacola, who was recently awarded the Halverson Motor Development Young Investigator Award by the National Association of Sport and Physical Education. Professor Leesa Martin, one of only two faculty in the United States to be recognized as an outstanding professor of middle-level education. And Professor Carl Grodarch of the School of Urban and Public Affairs, who was the only urbanist in the United States to receive a grant in 2012 from the National Endowment for the Arts for his work on the impact of creative class on economic development. And this does not include a host of others who work on cutting-edge research, the best forms of creative activity, winners of numerous awards, who are defining new ways to solve our problems and to improve the human condition, including the College of Nursing, which is defining new ways to address the national shortage of highly qualified nurses. And remember, we will all need them as we all age. But you get my drift. I could go on and on. The University of Texas at Arlington has a tremendous wealth of faculty, staff, and students, and all through this visit, Lisa and I have heard praises about the students from the faculty, about the faculty from the students, and of the staff from the faculty and students. It's a strong, compelling story, one that needs to be communicated far and wide, and one that I'm anxious not only to tell, but to continue nurturing and building, making sure that the community, the state, and the nation perceive the tremendous value of this institution. We have an exciting future, not just because of growth, but because of the potential for enhancement of excellence, because of the potential to continue developing and implementing innovative strategies of using advances in instructional technology, telecommunications, distance delivery, the integration of liberal arts and the sciences, to broaden the reach of education and research for the purposes of degrees, continuing education, technology transfer, and outreach, including to provide enhanced experiences for discovery and inquiry. Consider the ability to bring an archaeological dig alive in a classroom to a large number of students, or to allow our students to actually virtually walk through one of the biggest museums in the world, and perhaps view that art at a range closer than there would have in real life. We are in a world where access no longer is constrained by geographical co-location, and UT Arlington is leading the way in ensuring the new ways of connection yields with very high levels of preparation, and in moving from teaching as delivering knowledge to instruction as facilitating discovery. All of this as we continue to build a research enterprise second to none, an educational experience for undergraduates and graduates that is, and will continue to be, the envy of all, and one that involves not just faculty and professional staff, but our students, our alumni, and the community. Together, we are the University of Texas at Arlington, and together, we will not just continue the journey towards Tier One status, but will become a world-class institution, a preeminent place for intellectual pursuits, and a driver of positive change. Isn't this too ambitious? Well, let me tell you a little story, and I'm not very good at telling stories. A few scientists were given a small hut on a beach in a sleepy fishing village for purposes of conducting research related to oceanography, and from that, slowly grew an extension campus of a flagship university. This small extension campus was transformed in the early 1960s to a fledgling university, one that today is a powerhouse, loaded for top programs in the arts, humanities, social sciences, engineering, and medicine, a magnet and a core for the development of a burgeoning economy around IT and biotechnology. The flagship was the University of California, Berkeley. The fledgling university, now a world leader, is the University of California, San Diego, one where I had the privilege of spending most of my academic career, being pawed off and watching its dramatic trajectory to world-class status. I believe that UT Arlington can do the same. It is already on its way there, and we can do it together through dedication, unique strengths, innovation, wonderful faculty and staff, and a committed community. Remember the numbers I started out with? Here's the test: What were they? $20 billion in economic impact to spin-off companies, $3.2 billion in annual revenues, $1.1 billion in research, the eighth-best public university in the United States, the first in the nation in positive impact on the country, as reported for two consecutive years by the Washington Monthly. That is what we could achieve. That's where I believe we should be aiming, and that's where we should head. But through a combination of the drive of both UCSD and the University of Maryland, Baltimore County, another shining example, melding a research powerhouse and a great academic reputation with a deep sense of community, known for nurturing young minds in an environment that values excellence, innovation, and diversity. Together, we can continue the journey that President Spaniello started us on so well, and in the words of John Ruskin, "Dream lofty dreams, and as you dream, so shall you become." The vision is the promise of what you shall at last unveil. I'm excited about the legacy at UT Arlington, about the dreams and the future that we can all have together. I hope you are too. Thank you. Be glad to answer questions, or rather, to engage in a discussion. I'm going to prefer not to stand behind the podium, so I hope you don't mind. I will move around a little bit.
You've been talking a lot about faculty research. What is your philosophy regarding undergraduate and graduate research efforts?
Great question, and thank you for asking it. My apologies to all the faculty here. Faculty research cannot exist without undergraduate and graduate research. The research that I have done in my career has been due to my undergraduate and graduate students. At a university, that is a critical portion of what we do. That is the core of how we do it. We need to do more. We need to bring more opportunities for research and discovery and inquiry by both undergraduates and graduates.
My name is Khadija Green, and I am the president of Student Veteran Organization here. I guess just a little bit of stats, if you're not aware of. We have over 1,500 veterans and as well as dependents of veterans that use the education benefits here, and I was wondering, as far as each semester, it increases, so as well to possibly have a central location to cater to these students, how could you see if that's possibly proposed?
I'll have to first look at the background of what is already done. I don't know that. But you're absolutely right. We do have a large amount that we need to do for our veterans, and everywhere we actually have this problem, not just for veterans, but for all students, in terms of having to ask them to go to Office A, Office B, Office C, and going sometimes from pillar to post. So we need to look at it across the board to see how we can make it the most beneficial and the most efficient.
Thank you for your time this afternoon, Dr. Kabari. Do you believe it will be a difficult transition for you personally, moving from a campus of around 8,000 to one of 34,000? And will this change have a great effect on your current train of thinking in your decision-making process?
I don't think so. If you look at the role of a president, the president doesn't do everything himself or herself. In fact, I've yet to see a single president who does that. The president depends on a core of leadership across the university. He or she depends on a wonderful staff. They, in every case, do most of the heavy lifting. They are the ones who know the institution the best, and therefore, I don't see that transition being difficult, because there is a tremendous core of excellence over here already. The team that President Spaniello has put together already is one of the best in the nation, and therefore, that part of the transition, I'm not worried about at all. In terms of how I might change, I sleep four hours a night. I think I'll continue sleeping four hours a night.
Hello. I'm Monica Davis with UTA Radio News. As I'm sure you may know, the university has been soliciting alumni support for the possible return of football. Are you supportive of that initiative?
I'm not sure, and the reason is, I don't know very much about it. That is something I'll have to be educated on. I'll have to learn about it, and then we all will have to balance what it costs in order to make it happen, if indeed that is the best thing for the university.
Okay. So you said that you can't really tell us the plans, because you don't know the whole background yet, but you can have your vision. So where do you see UTA in five years and 10 years?
Let me take a step back. I can't have a vision. We have to have a vision. For a single individual to have a vision that is not accepted, not shared by the rest of the institution is pointless. I'll be walking by myself, and there'll probably be no one behind me. That doesn't work. However, if we look at where we could be in five years or 10 years, well on our way to Tier One status. Tier One status is a journey. It does not happen in two years. It definitely shouldn't take 20 years. It's somewhere in between that number. But we can do it together, but in five years, I'm sure that working together, we will be well on our way towards it, so that there is no question that we will be a Tier One university, that we are world-class, that we have excellence both in teaching and research, which today is very difficult for most universities to have that balanced path, and that's where I think we will be.
You mentioned UC San Diego, which is Tier One. What are some of the characteristics that it possesses that we don't?
There's very little that UC San Diego possesses today that UT Arlington does not have, in terms of the excellence that is there, in terms of the commitment that is there. It does not have the rankings, because UT Arlington doesn't have the rankings as yet. It does not have the research portfolio, but that is being built up. That takes time. That takes a level step forward, and that's really what I see as the difference between the two, is time. UC San Diego set that goal very, very early on, in the 1960s, when it was founded. It took on that it would be Tier One, that it would have AAU status. Being part of the UC system obviously helped with the Tier One status and with AAU. But in terms of what we have here versus UC San Diego, there's really not much of a difference, except for that factor of time. The commitment is there. The excellence is there. If we compare the number of members in the National Academy of Inventors from UC San Diego to those from UT Arlington, guess which came out ahead? UT Arlington did. That's where we should be going, and we shouldn't ever feel that we are second to somebody else. We are equal to, but we're on a journey that takes us to that same level. Time is all that we need.
Dr. Kabari, welcome to UT Arlington.
Thank you.
I'd like if you could share a little about your leadership style, and specifically, reflecting on some of the experiences you have had, whether it be as a student, or a faculty member, or as an administrator, that have helped to shape that leadership style.
Sure. Let me start out with a few experiences. Let me start off with a student first. One of the best students I've ever had was a student who I turned down twice before I took him on. I didn't feel he was good enough. He came back to me twice and said, "But I want to work with you." I said, "Nope. Look, you won't make it." And he came back and said, "You don't know me. I can and I will." So grudgingly, after a poor guy comes to my office twice, I said, "Ah, okay, let's try it out." He has been the best student I have ever had. Lesson number one: Do not make any assumptions. Don't go with any preconceived notions. And that's one thing that I absolutely keep. I cannot make assumptions right now about UT Arlington. That's why I don't have in-depth plans, because again, I need to talk, I need to listen, I need to learn. I need to engage with the faculty, staff, and students, with the consistency and across the board, with the community, to see what it is that we all want to do, where it is that we all see value, and then come up with a vision. If you're looking for leadership style, that's part of it. It's to seek that knowledge, that input, is to seek that discussion. Obviously, at the end, somebody has to make a decision. Sometimes, the decision has to be made by one individual, because consensus may not be reachable. It's nice if we can reach it, but if not, someone must reach a decision, otherwise we all waste time going around in circles. That's the other leadership style, which is to give time, but at the end, be willing to call and say, "It's time to take a decision, and it's my responsibility," if that's what it comes to. The third is that I'm extremely loyal to my staff and everyone that work with me. I don't believe that a person can work alone, and if I'm not loyal to them, they're not going to be loyal to me. Those are the three principles that I go by. Hope that answers your question.
Hi. Alex Weiss from Physics, and I had sort of a broad question about how you see universities in general evolving, and UTA in specific. Do you think the research university model, where there's a lot of federal funding coming in for research, is going to persist into the future?
Depends on what happens in a few days.
And also, the internet, the MOOCs and all that. How do you see us adapting?
Research universities or research enterprises, universities in general, are going through a large change. There's no doubt about it. Federal funding has been becoming more and more competitive and smaller over the years. If you tracked what was there 20 years ago, and where it was spread across, let's say, the 250 top research universities, and you track it now, it's a smaller group of universities that is garnering a larger percentage of the funds. There is no doubt about that. However, there are significant funds and significant work that we can do with the corporate world in translational research and applied research. There's significant work that comes from the international arena that we have not tapped into. So I don't see funding as being a huge problem. Where I see the issue is being able to balance teaching and research equally as we go forward, and UT Arlington's done a wonderful job here in terms of that. Where I see the challenge for universities is not just going head over heels about the latest buzzword that comes in. MOOCs are wonderful, but there is a place for a physical university. There is a place for that communication between students and the faculty member. Years and years ago, we had a wise person with students at his or her feet, and we had instruction in that way. We opened access to education, which was a wonderful thing to do, and that crowd around the feet became six, 20, 200, 600. Online distance delivery gives us a chance to maybe go back to that. In those cases where it can be done, providing supplemental information, in those cases where it can be done flipping the classroom, putting out some information that students can look at before, and then come and discuss in a studio-type environment with students. But it also provides us greater access in those fields where it makes sense to do that, where we can reach people who had never have been able to come to a university because of the problems of geography. And so universities will change, but universities like UT Arlington bring so much value that we will never become a post office box in the state of Delaware. We will remain like this, but our breadth and our depth will be greater. We will be reaching far more students.
Hi, Dr. Kabari. My name is Lindsay. I am the news editor for The Short Horn, which is our student newspaper here on campus. And as I'm sure you know by this point, we have a student newspaper, a student radio station, student TV station, other student media. I wanted to know what your thoughts were as far as supporting student media on campus and also making administration and faculty and staff available for those students to interview them for news stories.
As long as you write good stories about me, I'll support you. No, but more seriously. The newspaper and all forms of media are very, very important. Communication to our constituency, whatever be that constituency, is a key factor in the success of any university. Being able to communicate what the administration thinks, what the students feel, what is happening on campus, and being able to have that dialogue, not just with two people meeting, which is very important, but also having that communication spread across a much wider audience, is extremely important. Should it be a newspaper, or should it be on the web? I'll leave that up to the experts. I'm not the expert in that. But that form of communication, being able to do that, is extremely important, and I will support it. Being able to have administrators, faculty available to the news media. Part of that is, it depends on the faculty member and the administrator. Some of them may not want to be quoted every single day and every single hour on things that they haven't quite formulated as yet, and the news is very good at figuring out things that are still in its formative stages, where sometimes we can't talk about it, because very frankly, we don't know what's going to happen. We're still discussing it, and sometimes those stories, if they come out, start creating panic everywhere that something's going to happen when probably nothing's going to happen. But yes, there needs to be more communication, and I will have my door open to you and the others.
Zainab Chirikbutler, Professor of Electrical Engineering and Director of Nanotechnology, Research, and Education Center. As you know, DFW is... Research and Education Center. As you know, DFW is home to many high-tech companies, from the smallest to the largest ones like Texas Instruments. What are your plans for interacting with them and getting them involved in our mission to become tier one?
Start out by taking you with me, or having you take me to meet some of the leaders in the corporate world. One of the things that I absolutely have to do in the first few months is meet as many people as possible, not just to create a connection. The connection has already been made, but to make sure that we build on that connection, to make sure that we really instill in the community this absolute desire that they do work with, support, and be a part of UT Arlington. Yes, we have a tremendous wealth of high-tech companies. We have a tremendous wealth in terms of government agencies and labs close by as well. And it's very important that I reach out to each of them, but if I do it by myself, all I'm doing is saying UT Arlington is great. If I go with one of you who has a contact, that makes it that much stronger, and that's what I intend doing. We need to do a lot more of that, and I'll be counting on each one of you for your lists so that I can reach out to them and then help them help us.
Hi. I just actually started working at UT Arlington at the Smart Hospital, the College of Nursing, and my question's not related to that. It's actually, what is your idea of being accessible, or accessibility and visibility as a president?
I have to be extremely visible. The president serves as the ambassador, the advocate, the diplomat, the person who takes the tomatoes and the hard-boiled eggs or the raw eggs once in a while, but the person is the one who represents the university to the outside world and, very often, to the internal constituencies. I have to be very accessible, because if I'm not accessible, I'm not able to listen to what's being told to me. I'm not able to react, and I'm not able to take that message and then transfer that message to those who can really implement it. Presidents rarely by themselves can implement anything. The implementation is done by people in this room. And therefore, yes, the president needs to be extremely accessible. Yes, the president needs to be extremely visible outside. In fact, today, in today's environment, the visibility of a president can make a tremendous difference in just that story getting out, that story going out to the community, to the legislature, and I dare say to the system, that this is a wonderful university and worthy of the highest levels of support.
Bienvenido to UTA.
Thank you.
I'm Jose Angel Villar from Political Science. Excuse my voice. Dr. Resda Espanolo. Good afternoon. First, if anything I can do to help you, call on me in Political Science.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Second, we have increasing Hispanic enrollment at this institution. Will you seek to make UTA a Hispanic-serving institution?
I think that'll also depend on the system and what support they give us. But absolutely, what we need to do is to make it comfortable for all students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for spending time with us today. I'm Lisa London.
Thank you for having me here.
Very good. I'm Lisa London with the Division of Enterprise Development. Understanding that academic education and research are by far the most important objectives of this institution, but could you talk a little bit more about the role that continuing education, non-credit public service, and that sort of venture, self-sustaining venture, how can that support you and your mission for academic education and research?
It's extremely important, and for two specific reasons. One, if we want the community to adopt us as being their university, we have to be able to address all their needs. It's not just in terms of educating students who will then go and become part of the community and work with the community, but it is in providing education, training, continuing development for the rest of the community. So that part is extremely important. As we go forward in today's world, we can Google just about everything. The question is whether we're Googling the right thing and whether the knowledge that we're able to get is worth anything. And therefore, there is a tremendous desire on the part of a lot of individuals for having knowledge on demand. I want to become an expert in X, therefore I click, I read a couple of pages, and I am the expert. Happens to some, and successfully. To a lot of others, not at all. However, there is a need in the community to be able to have that education without having a degree, meaning you've already got a degree, or maybe you're just working and have tremendous experience in a certain area, and now you want to learn a little bit more about a very specific topic. We need to be able to provide that. We need to be able to take the specialized knowledge that we have and put it into modules, and it's already being done in a variety of areas. To make those modules available without a grade, without a degree status, but that does not mean that that becomes education. That is where we give to the community in order that they can then maybe come back and learn more. Or if they only want to learn a little bit, that we assure them that this is knowledge that has been validated. It's not just Google and figure out whether it's right or not. So it's very, very important, and I'll be looking to you and the entire division to do a lot more.
Good afternoon, Dr. Cabari.
Good afternoon.
Jay Horn, International Education. I wanted to know what your vision for the role of international education in an aspiring research institution as ours?
I can't give you my vision. I can give you my thoughts on it.
I heard that before. I was hoping for...
So I'll give you my thoughts. We live in a global economy. The world is becoming smaller and smaller day by day. Our students are hired by multinational firms. There'll be firms that are based in Japan or Europe or anywhere else. We need to be able to be an international university, and that means two things. It means being able to have international students come here, being able to integrate them within our community, which UT Arlington does extremely well. But it also means being able to provide opportunities for all our students in some way to have an experience internationally. It's a two-way street. If we only do one part of it, we're not reaching that full potential. For us to be truly world-class, we've got to find ways, and yes, it is difficult, but within the curriculum of certain majors, within the economic constraints that we have. But we have to work towards that so that we give all students that opportunity to immerse themselves, even for a short period of time, in some other culture, to learn about that culture, to learn about social norms, to learn how to deal with the problems that come up in that part of society. And then, when they come back and they work, to know that they can work as part of a global society.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Ken Romer from English. UTA has a richly deserved reputation in engineering, computer science, nursing, and my father was an engineer, so I'm certainly not anti-science. But I'm wondering, in your, and again, in your notion for advance, where do you think place, you know, schools like liberal arts fit into this? And could you be fairly specific as how you think this might think in terms of...
Sure.
...funding, role, image?
Let me start off with a quote from George Lucas. Scientists teach us why. The liberal arts teaches us how. And I think that really encapsures it. If we don't have English, if we don't have history, if we don't have the liberal arts, we as humans are not complete. To have a full human being, we have to have that full experience. So it's not just that an engineer needs the liberal arts, but it's also that we need people who excel in those fields. So for us to be a truly world-class university, we cannot achieve that with just a top-notch school of engineering or a top-notch school of science. We have to be across the board. And therefore, when we look to where we look at focuses, we have to look across. We obviously have to challenge certain departments, certain programs, to see how can we become more relevant in today's world? How can we make sure that our students see the value of an education in that field? Because in the end, the student is going to be looking for that first job. And we sometimes don't do a good enough job in telling them how they can get an education in one field and still go forward to get a job when they're not an engineer, not a scientist. But it's extremely important, and I don't think any university can survive without that.
I'll remember your words extremely important.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Linda McCollough. I'm on the College of Engineering Advisory Board and also the Advisory Board for the Fort Worth Center. UT Arlington has a tremendous pool of alumni. Many of those alumni, like myself, are retired or are in the process of retiring, or plan to shortly. I see this as a great pool of effort that could be brought to bear on various problems for the university. Would you be receptive to a proposal, for instance, for putting together an army of volunteers for the university?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question. It's more of a personal question for me. I'm an interim chair of the Department of Industrial and Manufacturing Systems Engineering. I find it a challenge to be interim chair because I have a family and I'm still doing research. Do you see a way to enable families to be part of this university so that it isn't as much of a challenge for people with families to take leadership roles, such as being chair of departments, or someday being president? You mentioned that you sleep four hours a night. I couldn't live that way.
I understand.
I don't know how many people here could live that way.
I understand.
I'd be completely useless at four hours a night.
I don't expect others to.
So is that what it takes to be a leader?
No, it does not.
Of that level? Or could you be someone who's raising kids, having elderly parents?
Absolutely.
Is there a way to do it? I mean, is there a plan? I haven't found it yet, but I'm curious to know. If you thought leadership on that, I'd be interested.
I don't have a plan, but I'd love to engage in a conversation to make that possible.
I think it's something that universities across the nation need to address. It's constantly a struggle.
There is no doubt about it.
Among women, and it is becoming a struggle among men too, who have wives that work and children.
Correct. There is absolutely no objection, no controversy about the fact that we need to do a lot more for people with families and with people with other responsibilities. Not having another job at another university that you're trying not to let your boss know about, but having other responsibilities, such as the ones you mentioned. Absolutely. We have to figure out a way. Is it going to be easy? Probably not, because we have constraints in place that we ourselves have put in place in years past. But we need to discuss it, and we need to look at innovative ways of making that happen. We've done it in certain cases. We need to just look at it a lot more. But it is an important one, and I will definitely want to engage with you on that.
Good afternoon, Dr. Cabari.
Good afternoon.
I'm Shenevia Hatcher, the Director of the Center for African-American Studies. I know you've answered some questions already about diversity. The university is considered one of top 20 in the nation for diversity.
It has an enviable reputation in that, and well-deserved.
Yes, we do. And I know you don't have plans yet, and you'll develop a team, but what are some strategies you've implemented in your previous universities or have seen implemented before that you feel may be great to bring here to build on that national picture? Thank you.
The biggest two things that we can do are, first, to understand that diversity does not mean lowering standards of excellence. The problem is, a lot of people think that's what it means. It's not. If you really look at it, we can have diversity and excellence side by side, and it's been done in other institutions. But making sure that people understand it so that that misperception does not exist is very, very important. The second is to build pools. When we have people who come from a smaller subset of the population, and it doesn't matter as to what that subset of the population is, they're obviously going to be pursued by a lot of people, just the same as if you had a Nobel Prize winner and four universities want to hire him or her. Guess what? The bidding gets very, very high. We have to be able to create those pools before we get into that bidding war, because then the MITs, the Stanfords, the Caltechs usually win, because they know that they are assured of that world-class reputation, rather than taking a risk on someone who is trying to develop that world-class reputation. Building those pools very early is very, very important. What we've done, both at the University of California, San Diego, and at UA Huntsville, is try to keep track of graduate students, for example, as they're going through their doctoral degrees, trying to figure out which ones of those are the ones that we would like to follow. In San Diego, we actually had a program across the UC system where we would take graduate students who excelled and came from these pools that we would like to be able to attract, and we give them fellowships for one year at another UC institution, taking them away, obviously, from their home institution to give them a broader perspective, but also giving the other institution that chance to say, "I would like to have you here. Come and take a look at me and see whether you would like to be over here." Building those pools very early on, tracking students very early on, keeping track of assistant professors as they're going through their careers, before they become that full professor, that is extremely important. It's the same with students, trying to make sure that we follow them through high school and middle school, making opportunities available to them. Those are things that we need to do, and if we do them, we will be extremely successful. The third and the most important thing, which is very similar to that first topic that I talked about, the misconception that exists, is to make sure that the message is from top down and it's completely implemented, not just something we talk about, but something we do on a daily basis. Because if we don't do that, we're not going to succeed.
Welcome, and...
Thank you.
Good luck. You have size 32 shoes to fill in.
Only 32. I thought it was 40 or 45.
Yeah.
There will be extremely big shoes to fill.
Yeah. I, you know, when you look at the US News and World Report, in the last column usually I take a look at, alumni giving, there was an alum, a lady that just recently talked about how do you get them to work? You know, the big schools, like for example, Princeton is 60%, and then you drop to Dartmouth and so on, right? So, you know, one of our department heads, you know, he always had the thing about vision without applying as, you know, hallucination type of thing. And so it doesn't matter how much we double or triple even our research. If we don't get our alum to participate in getting some funds, raising money, it's going to be very difficult. So what plan do you have in really engaging, like the lady that recently talked about, a grassroots effort to significantly increase the...
Sure.
Thank you.
Let me tell you a dirty secret first, and then I'll go to plans. If you look at how some of these institutions get very high rates of alumni giving, that's the dirty secret. You have an alumnus who gives a gift of X thousand dollars that is given in the name of the entire class of 1924 or '64. Guess what? You've discounted every single individual in that class. Your alumni giving rate just shot up. That's one way it's done. The other way it's done, and I'm not suggesting that we do that, but look at these numbers with a lot of caution, because they mean different things. A lot of times what people do is, as you graduate, you get an envelope with your diploma with $1 in it. Basically says, "Give me the dollar back or add a dollar to it, and that will be your donation to the alumni fund." That jumps the numbers up. The first is not a very good way to do it. It's a good way to have people challenged in order to give money, because it becomes a challenge grant or a challenge in terms of a donation. The second one, however, is extremely important when we try to build alumni and we try to build the donor base. Very often what we do is we don't instill in our students and in ourselves the entire form of giving. By the time we get to the point where we make the first ask, the person has left, long gone, and they... gone, and they may not have even thought about whether it is important to give or not. That first dollar that is given back to the university, whether it's by a freshman or a sophomore or as you graduate, becomes very important because it's that first link to the university. But more importantly than all this, we need to reach out and talk to our alumni. We need to make them feel that they are a vital inherent part of this university, not just the students who have graduated. "Thank you very much, you've graduated, we've taken your tuition, now when you become millionaires, come back and say hi to us." It is engaging with them on a continuous basis, making sure that they know about the points of pride. Not just in terms of sending out an email once in a while, but having leadership meet with them, having the deans of the colleges engage with them on a regular basis. That becomes extremely important. Giving is not something that people do just because. They do it because we've engaged them, because they feel that this is their university. So just as with the community, we have to reach out, we have to make sure that they feel important. And that's one of the things that I'm looking forward to doing, is actually engaging with a tremendous alumni base that is here and having them feel proud about this university. And then building in that trust that says, "We can do so much more. But in order to do that so much more, we are going to need your support." And that support can come in diverse ways. It can come in terms of coming back and helping our students. It can come in terms of being able to network for our students and our faculty, and it can come in terms of giving money. But that's what we have to do, and it's a stepwise process. But the first thing is to go out, reach out, and tell our story.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Cody. I work in the student union, and I was wondering if you could touch on how you define and measure student success?
It's a difficult question, because it depends on who you're talking to in terms of a student. Student success could be graduating in four years. It could be taking a large number of classes and maybe graduating in seven. We might not think it's success, but to that student, with the constraints that that student might have and the other work that they're doing side by side with family obligations, that might be tremendous success. Student success to me is making sure that every student gets a full educational experience, that we can provide to them every opportunity that can be done by the university, that they get the best education that we can afford, and that they get that experience that says, "This university cares about you. This university knows that you're not a number, you're not just a letter, you're not something on blackboard, you are a person, and we can work with you to make it happen." That in my definition is student success. Now, when you go to metrics, it is going to be the transfer out rate, the graduation rate, the retention rate, which by the way, I don't like that term at all, and I have to be upfront about it. Retention to me means holding on to someone. I prefer the term progression, and I know that iPads doesn't use that. But we need to make sure that students move on and they actually graduate, not that we just hold them on, which is what retain means to me. But that's my definition of student success.
Good afternoon and welcome to UT Arlington.
Thank you very much.
I'm Douglas Clark from the School of Architecture and the Parliamentarian for the Faculty Senate. I want to toss out one word to you and just see where you run with it. So the word is sustainability.
Very important, very, very important for every university, very important for all of us as human beings. We need to figure out a way to look at that. We need to figure out a way of how we instill in our students a sense of sustainability in the new world that we are now going to be living in. Sustainability means different things to different people. Sustainability to an administrator, taking it totally different, would just mean, "Do I have enough money to make sure that I can pay faculty and staff?" But going back to the other definition of sustainability, it is very important that we instill in our students the actual notion of sustainability, that everything that we do has an effect, and it would be much better for us that we start designing, that we start living, that we start looking at how we interact with each other in terms of a sustainable environment. Very important for us to do that.
Thank you, you ran with that very well.
Thanks.[1002.06][1002.06](Laughter)
Hello, I'm Dr. Lisa Martin from the College of Education and Health Professions. Welcome to the University of Texas at Arlington.
Thank you very much.
What are your views on teacher education?
Absolutely important, absolutely crucial, and without it, this nation cannot exist.
Thank you so much.
Lynn Peterson, Associate Dean of Engineering. As you probably know, a large percentage of our students, perhaps about half, come as transfer students. And I wonder if you could share your experience in doing an appropriate relationship with our community colleges?
It's very, very important. At the University of Alabama in Huntsville, our transfer student population that comes in every year is actually greater than our freshman population. And that means that we put a lot of emphasis on our links with community colleges. Now, in some systems, such as the University of California system, that progression is very well defined. You go to a community college, you have numbers on the courses, those courses transfer over, there is an agreement in place that says, "If you complete these classes with this grade, you will automatically get a spot at this university." In a lot of other states, that doesn't exist, and it causes a lot of problems for our transfer students. Some of them are amongst our brightest. In fact, we've done a number of studies, and nationally, a lot of studies have been done that show that unlike what a number of people feel, by the time they graduate, the performance of a transfer student is no different than the performance of a native student who started off in the freshman year. So let's get rid of that myth that I'm sure you've heard before. Transfer students can't do it because they're not well-prepared. Well, they can, and it's been proven over and over again. But we definitely need to go and talk to the community colleges. We definitely need to put in place good advising that helps them before they come over here, because by the time they come over here, it's sometimes too late. They've already taken a class that doesn't quite transfer. That class could be the prerequisite for all sorts of other classes, so instead of being a two-year additional, it becomes a three-year additional. We need to make sure that we actually reach out to them, because their needs when they come over here are extremely different. I was very happy to see in the student newspaper today that the transfer orientation, that transfer advising is mandatory. Now, we have to make sure it's different from that which is given to a freshman, because transfer student populations can be very different as well. Some of them may be returning students who are coming after a long period of time. But it's crucial that we work with community colleges, and we're doing a lot of that in Alabama right now, in terms of making key agreements with our feeder schools and then using that to make sure that that transition is very smooth.
Hi, my name is Venkat Devrajan, and welcome to the campus.
Thank you.
Dr. Kabbari. I was wondering, as different people represent different constituencies, and I think you rightfully said many of those things are very important, the tier-one status associated with that, in addition to the metrics, is also perception.
Absolutely.
And so, as you just said a few seconds ago, as an example, the transfer students, a large number of them, has this false perception that you're sort of deluding your standards and your students are not a high quality. For instance, does Stanford have a lot of transfer students? I don't think so.
Stanford doesn't.
So tier-one students, tier-one universities generally, I don't think have that many transfer students.
Actually, correction, UCSD has a great number.
Does it?
UCSD in, say, in the early 2000s had a problem, and a major problem because of our agreements with the community colleges. We actually found out that in the Electrical and Computer Engineering Department, had we stayed with the caps that we had in place of the number of students that we would admit, we would admit zero freshmen, because there were that many well-qualified transfer students who had met all the requirements. So a lot of tier-one schools actually have transfer students. The difference is that the articulation is done very well.
Okay. I just talked about the transfer students.
Sure.
As one element.
Yep.
There are other things, diversity, and a whole lot of other things that are all nice things to have. My question to you is, trying to be all things to everyone, is it consistent with this notion of trying to be a tier-one university, or should we put our blinders on and go for tier-one, whatever it takes?
You can definitely go for tier-one, you can't go with blinders on, because in order to be tier-one, it's not only ticking off those boxes, it's also making sure that the people who give you the wherewithal to tick off those boxes think you're very good. And in order to do that, we will have to have a wider spread. Can we do everything? No, we can't. Do we have to take some hard choices? Absolutely. But hard choices does not mean just having engineering and nothing else. It does not mean just having freshmen and having freshmen who only have an ACT or a SAT score in the top 25 in terms of the percentile. That's not the way to get to a tier-one, and it will fall back on us and we will not be accepted.
One more question, to someone bold enough to ask the last question.[1353.11][1353.11](Laughter)
And if I can't answer it, I'm going to pass it to you since you asked for it.
Right, that's fair. You're going to have two. You brought up all the strengths and all the nicety of UTA. What are some of the challenges and weaknesses that you know of or you can foresee that you have to deal with?
Sure. We are in a large urban metropolis. That has a huge number of advantages, but it has a huge number of challenges as well. Being able to make sure that we connect completely with the rest of the cities around us is going to be a big challenge. Not just connect and saying they know about us, but to make sure that this is the university that they believe, that they adopt, that they hold to be their university, that's a big challenge. And if we were like Penn State in Happy Valley, for example, it's a little easier. You get your students, they stay there, they move away. When they move away, as long as we haven't given them all Fs and we haven't given them problems in the financial aid office and we haven't advised them wrongly so they had to take 10 different classes, they actually feel that sense of belonging and they want to come back because they don't see the university every day. When our students have work opportunities in the close vicinity, they don't think of the university every day, because it's there. That's one of the big challenges, is to be able to get past that. Some of the other things that, if you look at them in terms of UT Arlington, and I wouldn't call them weaknesses, the things that we have to work on a little bit more. We do some tremendous work across the disciplines, and it's a challenge not just at UT Arlington but all across. How do we engage with students with some of the rules that we have in place? How do we engage in a graduate dissertation when a student might be part of a large team? And I'm not saying it isn't done at UT Arlington, I'm sure there are ways in which it has been solved, but as we go further, this will become a bigger challenge. If we look at the problem in terms of community college transfers, it is a challenge for us, because we have to look at it in a different way. We have to look at our students in a different way. Unlike the Stanfords and the Penn States, a lot of our students are going to be pathway students rather than pipeline students. And they could be students who go back and forth rather than coming here and then moving forward. Those I see as some of our challenges, but they're also our opportunities. We can differentiate ourselves very easily from the other universities around.
Will you take another question?
You'll have to ask President Spaniello, since he said only one.[1542.11][1542.11](Laughter)
Thank you. I'm Carolyn Case, Vice President for Research here at UT Arlington. One of the things I think that's real critical for all of us is to lead a very balanced life. You have expressed a number of thoughts in terms of how you would proceed as the president of this university. I'm wondering if you would share with us how, anything that you might want to share with us from a personal perspective in terms of how you arrange for yourself to have a balanced life?
I have a wonderful wife, and I hope she didn't ask you to ask this question.[1584.01][1584.01](Laughter) She provides that balance to my life, which means that when I go home, I can leave my worries behind. I also have a dog.[1598.34][1598.34](Laughter) Provides me with a tremendous opportunity, look at that. But, there's something I found out when I became the provost, that was different from when I was a faculty member pursuing research, when all I wanted to do was come back to my lab at night, and all I wanted to do was write paper after paper after paper and have 25 students. I had a fairly large research group. That's great, but you can only do it for a short period of time and you burn out. Having a balanced life and being able to balance family and the rest of your responsibilities as an academic or a staff member or even as a student is extremely important. And I think that's something that we forget very often. And we need to make sure as a university that we allow and enable that balance to take place, that we don't drive our faculty, staff, and students that hard. Students, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to study.[1655.38][1655.38](Laughter) Sometimes very, very hard, but otherwise, yes, there is a need for balance and we all have to watch it and when we lay demands on each other. And I want to make sure everyone understands, my sleeping four hours a night does not mean you have to sleep four hours a night. It's just that I cannot sleep more. If I do, I will get up with a headache and I will be very grumpy, so you don't want me sleeping more than four. But that's not what I expect out of everybody else. You have to be balanced, otherwise you will not be able to come to work and be a productive member of society, let alone of the university.[1693.86][1693.86](Applause) Thank you.
I want to ask you one question. I want to get it to, I'm not too near for everybody.
Sure, be glad to.
I just asked permission to ask a question. One of the things that people ask me regularly during my first few months as President of UT Arlington, and when I was a candidate to be President, was, "How on earth do you pronounce your last name?" So, I would like to ask Dr. Kabbari to give us personally a brief phonetic pronunciation of his name, so that we can all be experts. So, that's my question.
Okay. The first name is Vistasp. The P is half-silent. Takes a little bit of practice. The last name is Karbahari. If you can't pronounce it, please don't worry. Dr. K for a student is fine. For faculty and staff, VK is fine.[1758.82][1758.82](Applause)
And I would add, Mr. President's okay also.[1768.53][1768.53](Laughter) Thank you all
Thank you, everyone.
...for coming tonight.[1773.91][1773.91](Applause)[1774.91]